Public statement is hereby made that the adequate notice of this meeting was given by submission of said notice to the Burlington County Times, The Courier-Post, the Centumens and Township Post, and the District website on March 3, 2023, and also on March 8, 2023. May I have a motion to convene into executive session, Mr. Gaffney?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffney. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are now in executive session.
(inaudible)
Sorry, sneak behind you.
It's tight.
Tighter quarters here.
Get used to that.
I'm gonna tear you.
Wait when you want.
I make a motion to reconvene the meeting, Mr. Kenny.
So moved.
Second?
Secondly.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm meeting as well as again. Number four, routine business. A, the board secretary's report. B, the treasurer's report for January 2023. C, budget receipts and transfers for January 2023. The monthly transfer reports as of March 15th, 2023. High school activities report for February 2023. Food service management cost performance statement from February 2023. Certified bill list. Approval minutes. And... Mr. Gaffney, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Routine business. Number four, A through I.
I was a little fast there. So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay, to a roll call vote. Um... Mrs. Blassey?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Number six, now we'll hear from our student representatives.
This is fine.
I'm doing this home. I'm sorry, I apologize. Number five, routine matters. A, the enrollment report for March 10th, 2023. B, the health report for February 2023. C, the fire alarm report, February 2023. D, the crisis drill for February of 2023. There are no HIV reports this month. And Mr. Capello, the superintendent's monthly reports.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Thank you to all the members of the public for coming and joining us in our previous, more intimate settings here in Room 120. For those of you who do not regularly attend, we're typically down in the cafeteria. A change that we made in COVID times, we've been relocated this evening because of a dress rehearsal for the middle school musical, and we know where priorities are. So that space is theirs this evening. Thank you for joining us here. It has been an exciting evening already because just about an hour and a half ago, the Future Chefs Competition took place where our Rush students, six of them created and developed original recipes. This year's theme was healthy side dishes, and it was great to see their interpretation of healthy choices. And congratulations to Nora Serino, who was the winner of this year's Future Chef Competition. And we recognize Lisa Friedrich from Sedexo, Supervisor of Food Services here in Cinnaminsin for the work that she did in planning and executing such a fantastic event. Late February and early March, there are many events throughout the district to celebrate reading and literacy in our schools. To highlight a couple of them, our kindergarten students engaged in an activity called Read It Loud Challenge, where they listened to books read aloud to them from CHS students, some of their second grade buddies, and special guest kindergarten teacher readers. These books, along with their readings at school and home, earned them treats for them all to enjoy. First and second grade students continue to participate in the Book Buddies Program, visiting classrooms across the building to serve as guest readers for younger students. And second grade classes continue to enjoy the Pirates and Pages Program with our therapy dogs Lily and Roxy each week, who we met at a previous Board of Education meeting. To continue to celebrate our love of reading and literacy, this Thursday, the New Albany School will be playing host to the Read Across New Jersey event, an event that's sponsored in collaboration with the Burlington County Education Association. We look forward to welcoming local dignitaries, including our Executive County Superintendent, representatives from the NJ DOE, and local legislators, who will be in our buildings to read to students. And each student at the New Albany School will be given a book at the culminating activity this Thursday, so we look forward to a great event. And while we close to the public, I'm certain you'll be able to enjoy some of the pictures of that event on our social media outlets. Congratulations to the Performing Arts Department from CHS on a wonderful production of Chicago Teen Edition. The play was under the direction of Ms. Megan Schweitzer, Ms. Colleen DePietro, Mr. Keith Keston. Choreography by Shermaine McCool, vocals by Brian Bacon, and the orchestra conducted by Dr. Nick DeSalvio. If you had a chance to go see the musical, it was absolutely outstanding, exceeding even our very high expectations here. And of course, wanted to also recognize our student director Bentley Bramhall, who did a great job, not only student directing, but as a cast member as well. If you love the arts in Cinnaminsin, I already mentioned the musical that the middle school students are working on. The CMS Pirate Players will be performing over the course of the next two weekends. Six shows, definitely encourage you to come and check it out. We expect that they will be fantastic. I want to thank and recognize Mrs. Karen Sweets and Mrs. DeSimone for helping to bring two-time FIFA World Cup and two-time Olympic champion Carly Lloyd to the Rush School to meet with fifth grade students yesterday. Ms. Lloyd was incredibly gracious, spent a lot of time with our students, not only speaking to them about her life and her journey, hard work, dedication, and some of the times that she failed, but she also got to spend some time with them, signing autographs, meeting with students, and spending time in the classroom. She just was very generous with her time and had a great message and helped us to celebrate and recognize Women's History Month. So fantastic work, Mrs. DeSimone and Mrs. Sweets. Right now, as we speak, our seniors are in Disney. It's the beginning of a very exciting time for them. They are less than 100 days now from graduation and enjoying their culminating activity in Florida right now. We have two different events this month, recognizing SEL Day. There was an SEL Day event that took place in the district this past Friday, where some of our students and staff and building folks got to meet our third therapy dog, Remy. Remy got to spend time in the middle school in classes and a variety of social and emotional learning-themed activities, and we are expecting his return to Cinnaminsin High School this coming Friday for some SEL Day-related activities. We appreciate the support of students and families as our high school juniors are currently taking the NJ GPA assessment graduation requirement for the class of 2024. Thank you to Sherry Spear and Dr. Goldburn for ensuring a successful administration of this state-required assessments. As I look out in the audience, I do want to recognize a couple of folks. Tamar Beatty from the CEA is here, along with Michelle Reisman, President of the Association. Tamar Beatty and I began conversations over a year ago on what would ultimately lead to a successful negotiation process, and I would like to take this opportunity to recognize their actions publicly, along with members of their executive committee and negotiations team. Thank you to the whole group for working hard to come together with the board collaboratively to develop the memorandum of agreement that is on the board's agendas for approval this evening. And as always, we appreciate and applaud the level of professionalism that you give to both teaching your students here and the work that you do on behalf of the labor that you represent and the great relationship that we've established as a board. And they see, Ms. Fratto is behind you as well, who I did not see at first. So thank you all for your efforts. One year ago, this board adopted a stigma-free designation. And so marking this one-year designation, members of the public may be curious to see, as they see some of the messaging throughout our buildings that say Cinnaminsin has been designated stigma-free. This designation is a reminder that Cinnaminsin Schools recognize the importance of education and awareness, and that our Board of Education supports local resources that are available to treat the diseases of mental illness and substance abuse, so that students and families do not have to suffer alone. Earlier this year, the district partnered with an organization called CareSalus to create a path for treatment resources for any member of the Cinnaminsin community, not just students or staff, but any member of the Cinnaminsin community. Members in our schools and the public are reminded that with a quick call to CareSalus, professionals can help bridge the gap in making a warm handoff to treatment options. Likewise, during tonight's meeting, the agenda calls for the approval of a partnership with Insight Health to give additional resources to local mental health care providers directly to students and families. I applaud this board on your commitment to this important effort and reinforcing the notion that there can be no health without mental health. This evening, a little bit later on, we will hear from Mr. Robin Verso, the district's independent auditor, with the annual audit reports. Likewise, I'm looking forward to a presentation from our folks from the high school's Play Unified program, and encourage you to come back in the months of April and May for future presentations from our technology department as we celebrate the one-year anniversary of our one-to-one Chromebook deployments. And also, we'll hear from the folks from the Wellness Center at the high school with an update on progress there. On this evening's agenda is the first public-facing step in advancing the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 school budget. With approval from the board tonight, Mrs. Livinggood can submit this preliminary budget to the county office for review. Members of the public may attend the public hearing on the budget currently scheduled in the month of April. Details will be available on the district website. And speaking of Mrs. Livinggood, I'd like to publicly recognize her and thank her for the work that she did in preparing this budget. It is a process that begins very early on in the year, and we may not see Mrs. Livinggood for a couple of months, but we certainly wish her well for her upcoming blessings. So that said, Mrs. Turner, that is the somewhat long superintendent's report this month.
Thank you very much, Mr. Capello. Do you have a motion to approve routine business, Mr. Bramhall?
So moved.
Second?
Secondly.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Motion approves, items 5A through 5F under routine matters. Roll call, please, Mr. Evans.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, motion approved. Moving on to Section 16, Student Representative Reports. We have substitutes this evening, and first we will have Mr. Drew Pallett, Jr., because the seniors are on a trip in Disney. Thank you.
Thank you. The Students of the Month for February, Class of 2023, Patrick Gigan. Class of 2024, Anna Marino. Class of 2025, Samantha Rock. Class of 2026, Robert Jacob. Winter sports have concluded their seasons. Congrats on Brooks Sanderovich for playing in the South Jersey All-Star Game. Also, congratulations to our seniors Katie Ambos, Rochelle Johnson, Bella Lormer, and Brooks Sanderovich, who were honored at the Al Carino End of the Season Banquet. Congrats to our dream team on winning this year's CHS volleyball tournament. The Munch Machines played a great match, which came down to the last set. Thanks to all teams for playing, and we look forward to an even bigger turnout next year. Mason Durantek, Noah McChristie, Brendan Fratto, and Sean Gilmore represented the CHS swim team at the NJ Meter Champs. Noah placed 26th in the 200 freestyle and 17th in the 500 freestyle. The 400 free relay placed 23rd. Last weekend at the Meter Champions, the team took third at state relays, first at the sectionals, and second at states. We had three individual meter champ qualifiers and one relay team, and all finished in the top 20. We are so proud of everyone in the program, boys and girls. On Friday, March 10th, the boys crushed it at the Nike Indoor Nationals and took seventh in a school record of 10 minutes and 21 seconds. This is a school record and a pen relays qualifier. This morning, 149 of the 214 seniors left CHS to attend the senior class trip in Disney World. The seniors will return on Saturday, March 18th. We wish them many memories in the happiest place on earth. Chicago Teen Edition delighted audience over the past two weekends. The CHS Drama Club extends a warm thank you to the Cinnaminsin community for their support and appreciation of a wonderful show. They would like to give a special thanks to the parent volunteers and wish them, and wish the best for their graduating class of 2023 and incredible contributions they have made to our school. Fourteen members of Cinnaminsin DECA attended the 2023 New Jersey State Career Development Conference in Atlantic City from February 27th to March 1st. Members Stephanie Renoff, the president, Derek Cosiano, and Madeline Hubbard received instructional awards for top scores in their first role play. Stephanie achieved sixth place in hotel and lodging management, while Derek Cosiano was a semifinalist in the food marketing series. Both qualify for the national competition. Advisor Mr. Roger Razowski received recognition for five years of service to DECA. Our chapter was recognized for the membership campaign, community service campaign, and gold certification for the school-based enterprise, and our contribution to this New Jersey State Community Service Project benefiting the Covenant House of New Jersey. An additional eight students will travel with Stephanie and Derek to the 2023 DECA International Career Development Conference in Orlando from April 22nd to 26th. from April 22nd to 26th to represent our chapter in Emerging Leaders Academy. National Honor Society members hold tutoring sessions every Tuesday in the library from 2:15 to 2:45. Students are able to get any academic help they need. Glamour Gals is a club where students are able to make senior citizens feel loved and good about themselves. Some activities that they participate in for the group are card-making for the holidays, and since they are just getting started getting back to visiting them in person, they paint their nails and make them feel beautiful. Emma Mascherangelo, an officer of Glamour Gals, is trying to find ways to make the senior citizens happy, and she was contacted about a Valentine's Day Galentine's Day package. Emma completed the required paperwork and received a package filled with Valentine's goodies that all the senior citizens love. Emma says it truly has been rewarding being able to see them in person and also happy. On Wednesday, March 1st, the multicultural club sponsored an End of Black History Month celebration by watching Wakanda Forever and having a soul food feast. CHS affinity group members Jack Shallow and Seamus Mahoney visited the Bright Eyes students and read "It Starts With Me" by Dr. Bernice King and Kimberly Johnson in an effort to share Dr. Martin Luther King's dream of a beloved community. This was a full-circle moment as Seamus and Jack were once Bright Eyes students themselves. This week, Cinnamonsen High School hosted its 38th Annual Invention Convention and led and organized by Mr. Craig Angelini. Inventors and inventors from grades 1 through 12 came together to display and highlight their creations in the annual tradition. A common theme amongst the participants was an overwhelming desire to improve people's lives. In the high school division, Bentley Bramhall took first place. Stephanie Renoff and Kevin Storey came in second, and Leela Colley placed third. In addition, Ella Donan, Cassidy Cooney, and Caitlin Vogel received an honorable mention, third-place scholarship. An amazing event displaying student creativity and drive. The Cinnamonsen Invention Convention continues to be a huge success. We congratulate and thank all participants for their job well done. Many thanks to Mr. Angelini, our judges, parents, and families, staff, and everyone involved in this showcase. That's all for the high school. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Drew. Now we have Student Council President Dylan Burke standing in for the middle school.
Good evening to you all. My name is Dylan Burke, President of CMS Student Council, and I'm filling in for Lucia Schalat this evening. I would first like to report on our February Students of the Month. For February, we had Allison Retzko for 6th grade, Madison Danowski for 7th, and Sunar Zavali for 8th. Spring sports will begin the week of March 20th. March is Women's History Month. Students will be involved in some activities highlighting women's rights in their social studies classes. On March, February 27th, all 6th grade students attended the rink for skating party from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Students had a blast. CMS celebrated Read Across America this month. Students participated in themed days to celebrate the week. Students, staff, and special guests from district read in the afternoon for 2023 seconds, 33.7 minutes, along with celebrating Read Across America. CMS collected baby, kid, and teen books. Donations will be going to Book Smiles to benefit kids in schools in need of reading books. Pirate Players presents Crazy for You, U Edition, opening this Friday at 7:30 p.m. Saturday; March 18th at 7:30 p.m. Sunday; March 19th at 2:00 p.m. The final show will be Friday, March 24th and 25th. The cast and crew have been hard at work rehearsing their big shows and are looking forward to seeing families and communities members of the shows. The dance club is working with the CMS corps to add spring dance to one of their songs for the spring concert. In Stop Club, students created a Stop and Take What You Need interactive display. Students and/or teachers can keep a short message for themselves, grab one to pass along and celebrate another student or colleague. To celebrate February as the month of kindness, Stop thought this would be a great interactive board that's accessible to anyone in the building. On Sunday, February 26th, students, Cinnamonsen's select singers, performed the National Anthem at the Harlem Globetrotters at the Wells Fargo Center under the direction of Ms. Segman. It was a great game and fun time was had by all. March 21st is World Down Syndrome Day. It also is known as Rock Your Socks Day. Students, teachers, and staff are encouraged to wear crazy socks, bright colored socks, long socks, short socks, printed socks, mismatched socks, or any kind of fun socks to celebrate being unique. The Cinnamonsen District and other schools around the world celebrate International SEL Day on Friday, March 10th. Each school celebrated the day by practicing in various activities and lessons to promote social and emotional wellness. Thank you, and I hope you all have a great night.
Thank you very much. Okay, well now move on to our number seven, our presentations. Our auto-presentation by Mr. Robert Inverso.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Inverso, if you don't mind using the microphone there, it will not help amplify you in the room, but it is required for our folks at home.
Okay, thank you. I think everybody has in front of them the financial summary that I'd like to go over. I'd like to direct your attention to the left-hand column. Under June 30th of 2022, this is what happened for the year ending that year. Tax levy, we took in $35,192,000. Tuition, $489,000. Transportation revenue, $1,361,000. Miscellaneous revenue, $125,000. Federal aid, $37,000. State aid, $13,561,092. Total revenues for the period, $150,767,945. We expended in the same period, $48,713,564, resulting in a net profit of the year of $2,054,381. We started the year with a fund balance of $14,706,232. We're ending with an overall fund balance of $16,766,13. That number is further defined right below. What makes that up? Reserve for encumbrances, $490,000. Those are orders that were placed a year end that will be paid this year. Capital reserve, $3,618,000. Maintenance reserve, $2,560,000. Excess surplus, $3,223,447. That's the amount that must be put into the 2324 budget. Designated for next year's expenditures, $3,837,185. That's the amount that was put into the 2223 budget. Unemployment compensation, $483,000. And our unreserved and undesignated is $2,545,964, resulting in the $16,766,13. The calculation of the undesigned surplus is down at the bottom. And basically, what that is, is your expenditures, $48,713,564, times 4%, giving you $1,948,543, plus extraordinary aid, what was received versus what was budgeted, of $576, and non-public transportation aid of $20,000, equaling the $2,545,964. So that's where we stand financially. Fund balances in school districts are complicated. There's a lot of things that go on in making them up. It's just the way that it is. So overall, we're in pretty good financial shape. What's happening is we're using a lot of money to support our budget, putting pressure on us to return money each year. The way a district returns money is by watching what they spend. Most of the money that comes back to you is leftover from your budget, because that's the way it is. Comparison of budget to actual, in this year, we spent a little bit more. You look at the total budget, it's $53,088. We spent $49,204, about 93%. The previous year was about 86%. So the budget's getting a little bit tighter. Still returning good amounts of money, though. And that's where we stand. The board records this year were in very good shape. They really were. There is one recommendation regarding food service. The way it works is if you have a nonprofit food service, you can't have surplus of more than three-month expenditures. And what happened in the past year, we got a ton of money from federal aid that came in. And it knocked us over. Our net cash resources were $551,000, and our expenditures, three-month average, was only $316,000. So it gave us $235,000 extra. I've had this in a lot of districts, and it's a typical problem. Now this year, we've gone back to the old way, where it's free reduced and paid, so the revenue will go down. Okay, that's the only recommendation. Any questions? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to our Play Unified presentation. This will be presented by Mrs. Rella, coaches Mr. Digney, Mrs. Savoka, Mr. Keston, all here.
If members of the board would like to relocate, there are some slides. We don't need to. Hopefully you can see past my head. This is not a thing. I saw the pictures earlier, so I'm going to concentrate on our presentation, so.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kelsey Rella. I'm a specialized teacher at the high school, as well as the Play Unified Coordinator. I just want to say thank you for having us here tonight to present a little bit about what we've done over the past seven years with the Unified Program. It's been a positive experience for everybody involved, so we're happy to be here to share some of the things that we've done. So there's two pieces to the Unified Program. We have a Play Unified, which is the athletic piece, and then we have a Unified Club, which is the social aspect, which I'll talk about later in the presentation. So the Play Unified Program runs three seasons. We have soccer, basketball, and track, each running about eight weeks long. And they're with two events per week. So soccer is September through October, basketball is January through February, and then track is April through May. Those eight weeks are made up of either a practice and a game a week, or two practices, two games, however, the schedule kind of falls. Our teams are made up of athletes, which are our students who are classified and have IUPs, and then our partners, which are our general education students. And then when we go out and compete, there's a ratio. So like, for example, when we do basketball games, we'll have three partners or two partners out on the court with three athletes, and then we compete against other teams in the area. So, Mr. Keston, he's going to speak about the soccer season. He's a coach.
Hello, everybody. I'm Keith Keston. I'm a French teacher at the high school, and I also do the Play Unified soccer team in the fall. It's an absolutely wonderful experience. I've done it now. I was asking Kelsey before the meeting, I was like, how long have I done this? It's three, four years. I don't recall exactly, but it's really been tremendous. We've had an increase in the number of our athletes, as well as the number of partners. And I think it's just such an awesome opportunity for our students with IUPs to have an opportunity to compete and to feel like a varsity athlete. This year, we went and had wonderful trips at Penn Sock and High School, where we worked well with their athletic director and their Play Unified coordinator over there. We had an awesome job going to Delran High School, Moorestown High School, and we're developing, I would dare say, friendships with the coaches. And it's just really been a really positive and rewarding experience for everyone involved, really. And it's one of the things I really look forward to every fall, and bringing this sport and this interscholastic opportunity to our athletes. So I think it's really a wonderful thing, and I think it's one of the things that... I've been at Cinnamonsen now for about 10 years, and I think it's one of the things that we do really, really well. I think we do exceptionally well with our special education population in general. And I think this is one of the things that makes it such an awesome thing and a really inclusive environment.
Good evening. My name is Matt Digney, and this is Tracy Savoka. And we both coached the Play Unified basketball team this past winter. And similar, almost identical to what Keith just said, we should have shared notes, but we have seen tremendous growth in this program. This is our sixth season doing the basketball program, and we started off with four partners and four athletes. And then this past winter, we had over 13 athletes and over 20 partners. It is. It's a hidden gem here in Cinnamonsen. Thank you. Yeah, and with that, you know, Tracy and I are only a small piece of this. We've had a ton of help from the student body, from administration, and from faculty as well. I stole your line, Trace. I'm sorry. But we had a 13-game season this year, and we finished 7-6. We played in the Moorestown Tournament, which was an all-day tournament, and we lost in the championship game by one point. So the games do get competitive, and it's a great atmosphere. It's a great setting. You know, we are coaching. We're really coaching, and the players are really playing. And anyone that gets a chance to see the game really walks away smiling. It's a wonderful opportunity. Tracy, anything going on out there?
I'm sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Like that said, Tracy Savoka, Health and PE at the high school. We are very fortunate. We get a lot of support from our administration, from the staff in the school, from our students, our girls and boys' basketball programs. They come out to our games. They make signs for the kids. It really is an amazing atmosphere. It's very electrifying. If you've never been to a game, I strongly encourage you to come out and check it out. You can find our schedule on the website, the Cinnamonsen High School website, just like you would look for a varsity game or any other programs. We're right there. You can find us. And it's really amazing. When the kids do something that they've never done before, they just light up, and the crowd goes wild. And it's like, it's probably better than an NBA game, really, if you're into that, because I'm not really into NBA, but it's really something special if you've never seen it. So definitely come out and check us out, because it's a lot of fun. Okay, and then our last season is the Unified Track. And Colleen DePietro is the coach of the track program for the last few years. So similar format, we'll do some combined practices since we're out on the track with the varsity and the JV at the same time. The varsity athletes will help in with the technique of like the shot put and the long jump, and they'll help out our kids. So it's great, like, just inclusive to be able to do practices with the varsity track team as well. If there's pep rally in this fall and in the spring, pep rallies, we compete in an event during the pep rally. So that's awesome, too, to get our kids out in front of the whole school, competing in an event. And then we'll do try and quad meets with a bunch of different schools around the district or around the South Jersey. And then we also do track meets where we concurrently run with the varsity meets. So that's a nice atmosphere, too, because it's a big crowd. We get a lot of more spectators, and that's just cool for our athletes to kind of be in part of like more of a regular, you know, event. So then that brings us to the social part of the Unified Program, and this is the Unified Club. So this runs two times a month during Smart Lunch. Our students of all ability levels, they'll eat together. Sometimes we'll put conversation starter cards out on the tables just to like help them with socialization. When it's nice out in the fall and the spring, we'll go outside to the court, and we'll eat out there. We'll bring out different games, like cornhole and basketball. So after they eat together, and then they'll play games together. And then when we're inside, we do theme-based activities and crafts, usually like holiday beasts or something along, you know, what's going on that time of the year. And the really cool thing about Unified Club is it's pretty much student-run. So we have a president, we have a vice president, we have social media ambassador, and we have a secretary, but we have two positions for each. So it's held by a general ed and a regular ed student. And we have an election at the beginning of the year to fill those positions. And then we have planning meetings twice a month after school with the officers. And then they give us ideas of what they want to do for the club, and then they get the supplies, and then they actually plan and implement at the next meeting. So it's really cool to just see, you know, general ed and specialized ed students working together to, you know, run the club. So then here's some pictures, so that's some crafts we've done. I think Matt had talked about how they came to the games and like cheer on the Play Unified. So we'll make signs and posters, and then our Unified Club members will go to the Play Unified games and like cheer on the sports team. So it's cool. It just like kind of brings everything together. And then that's another picture. The Special Olympics, every year, will run a youth summit at River Winds, and we've gone to that quite a few times. And it's just members from all over South Jersey get together. They share different things that they're doing in their clubs and their programs. And then, you know, it's a good way for us to collaborate with other schools and then bring back different things to make our program more inclusive. Last year, we did this. This was really cool. We were able to design a Play Unified wall. So in our varsity hallway right outside of our gym at the high school, a lot of other teams are represented, like the varsity teams have their posters up or their, you know, awards. And we didn't really have anything representing Play Unified. So we were able to use some of our grant money to get signage and pictures. And our Unified Club actually helped us design what the wall was going to look like. And that picture right there is actually our club painting the wall. So that was a really cool project that we did last year. So that was a really cool project that we did last year. And then new for this year, we're hoping to use some of our, well, we are going to use some of our grant money to host a Unified Dance, and this is going to happen at the end of April. It's for all of our Play Unified members, partners, athletes, and, yeah, so anyone from Play Unified or anybody from the club. Some of them, we're also inviting Delran and Moorestown, since like we said, we kind of build like this, like, community, because we've gone back and forth to so many schools, we know the athletes, we know the coaches, so they're going to come to Cinnamonsen for this dance. We have a DJ, a photo booth, we're going to have food, games. We think it's going to be like a really great time, the kids are very excited, and the Unified Club is planning that, so that's going to be great. And then I think, just as some, like in closing, it's just really about like the whole school engagement and the inclusive environment, I think this quote kind of sums it up, through the power of sports and social clubs. "Our students with disabilities discover new strengths and abilities, skills, and success, and our athletes find joy and confidence in fulfillment." And I really do think it's like a feeling, it's just, it's been so beneficial and such a positive experience for everyone involved, for the staff, for the general ed kids, for the special ed students, and it's, you know, a game day where the partner passing an athlete in the hallway and like giving a high five or a fist pump. And like, it's just like, when you see that, it's really just inspiring. And, you know, we do have some grant money, but we also have great support from administration and from board members, so, you know, we really appreciate the support and the backing of us that we're able to, you know, start this program here and really expand it over the last few years. So thank you for allowing us to come here tonight and present. So I don't know if anybody has any questions at this time.
Well, thank you all for a great presentation.
Okay, moving on, number eight, any correspondence to any board members that they have? Anyone? No? Okay, no correspondence to the board. Number nine, we have committee reports. Sorry, let me log that in. And we have, Mr. Bramall from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. The Finance Personnel Committee met me a Google Meet on Tuesday, March 7th at 4:00 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to review the 2324 proposed budget. Mrs. Livinggood reviewed the following budget items with the committee. We went over tax levy increases, state aid, bank cap, proposed budget additions, and maintenance and capital projects. Mr. Capello discussed proposed staff, existing needs, and potential staff changes for the 2324 school year. An approval for submission of the 2324 preliminary budget is on the agenda for the Board of Education approval tonight. The full budget presentation and request for approval will be at the April 25th Board of Education meeting, and the next meeting of the Finance Personnel Committee has not been scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bramall, Mr. Gaffney. We'll do the summary for curriculum, please.
Thanks, Mrs. Turner. The Curriculum and Student Activities Committee met also last Tuesday, March 7th. The committee reviewed the proposed calendar for the 2023-2024 school year. A proposal for a new Guitarist II course at the high school was discussed, as were several new instructional materials for next year for high school math, 6th grade social studies, and middle school computer science. The committee reviewed several field trips and professional development requests. Lastly, a request to add an additional high school lacrosse coach was approved by the committee, and our next meeting has not been determined yet. Thank you, Mrs. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffney. Ms. Quine, may I have a motion to approve the committee reports?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very much, all in favor? Ms. Byste?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to number 10, public comment on agenda items only. Members of the public are reminded that comments should be limited to items appearing on this meeting's agenda. There will be another opportunity during this meeting to comment on non-agenda items. All members of the public wishing to speak on agenda items only should please raise their hand to indicate their wish to speak. When called upon, participants should state their first and last name and address clearly for the record, in accordance with the Cinnamonsen Board of Education Bylaw 0164.6. Comments will be limited to a maximum of four minutes per person, the comment period will be limited to 30 minutes in duration. Anyone have anything to speak on in reference to agenda items only? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mr. Capello, Personnel Certificate.
Thank you again, Mrs. Turner, under Section 11, Letter A, seeking the board to approve Items 1 and 2 under Appointments and Transfers. Letter B, seeking the board to approve Item Number 1. Under Letter C, there are no teaching overloads, nor are there any advancements on the salary guide. Letter E, extra duty appointments, seeking the board to approve Items 1 and 2 as listed in the agenda. Under Letter F, seeking the board to approve Items 1 and 2 as listed in the agenda. Under Letter G, seeking the board to approve Items 1 through 3 listed in the agenda. Under Letter H, seeking the board to approve the tutors that are listed in the agenda. Under Letter I, seeking the board to approve Items 1 through 3 listed in the agenda, there are no mentor teachers. And that was Certificated Personnel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Capello. Ms. Iken, can I have a motion to approve Section 11 Personnel Certified, please? A through K.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. All in favor? Ms. Byste?
Aye.
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 Aye? Motion passed. Moving on to number 12, no, no, yes, number 12, Non-Certificated, Mr. Capello.
Thank you again, Mrs. Turner, under Section 12, Letter A, seeking the board to approve Items 1 through 6 under Resignations, Retirements, Suspension, Termination. Under Letter B, seeking the board to approve Items 1 through 3 as listed in the agenda. Under Appointments, Reappointments, Adjustments, seeking the board to approve Items 1 through 4 as listed in the agenda. Under Letter D, Extra Duty, seeking the board to approve Items 1 and 2 as listed in the agenda. Transfers, Letter E, seeking the board to approve all transfers listed in the agenda under Letter E. Job Description, seeking the board to approve the One Job Description listed in the agenda. And under Letter G, seeking the board to approve the Substitutes and Volunteers listed in Items 1 through 3 in the agenda. And that is Non-Certificated Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Capello. Mr. Bramall, can I have a motion to approve Section 12, Letters A through H?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Quine, Mr. Evans?
Aye.
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 Aye? Motion approved. Moving on to 13, Curriculum and Instruction. Mr. Goldberg?
Thank you very much. Under 13, Letter A, requesting Board approval of the professional development requests that are attached. Under Letter B, requesting approval of the field trip requests that are attached. Under Letter C, instructional materials, numbers 1, 2, and 3. There's nothing under D this month. Under Letter E, requesting Board approval of a new course, Guitarist II at Cinnamonsen High School for the 2324 school year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goldberg, may I have a motion, Mr. Kenny, to approve number 13, A through F?
So moved.
Thank you very much, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Ms. Byste?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to 14, Special Education, Mrs. Llewell.
Thank you, Mrs. Turner. Under Letter A, Contracts, there are none. Under Letter B, Student Placements, seeking the board to approve the Tuition Contract Agreement listed in the agenda. Under Letter C, Consultant Agreements, seeking the board to approve the Two Consulting Agreements listed in the agenda. And that is all under Special Education. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gaffney, may I have a motion to approve number 14, Special Education, Items A through D?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kenny, thank you very much, Mr. Evans?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to, actually? Number 15, Policy and Regulations. Mr. Capello, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Turner. Under 15, Letter A, seeking the board to approve on second reading and adoption the following policies and regulations that are listed in the agenda. One item.
Thank you very much. Ms. Iken, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Ms. Byste?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved, and now, Mr.?
Mrs. Turner, at this time, I'm going to ask if we can take a motion from the board to enter, I know this is unusual, but if we could have a motion to enter into a brief executive session of the board before we continue with the agenda?
Mr. Gaffney, would you motion that?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, we will go, now go into an executive session for?
Approximately five to 10 minutes, we'll be right across all members of the public, so we'll be back in five to 10 minutes.
To reconvene the meeting?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to reconvene the meeting, agreed upon. Number sixteen, business and financial, Ms. Livinggood, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Turner.
Thank you.
Item A, one, authorization for submission to the Department of Ed for a rod grant that the board authorizes garrison architects to complete and submit a regular operating district grant on behalf of Cinnamonson School District for the boiler replacement at the middle school as per the long-range facilities plan attached. Item B, finance. Item number one, that the board approves the mileage reimbursement requests for the staff members as attached. Item number two, that the board approves reimbursements of twenty-one, twenty-two tuition based on the receipt of certified tuition rates from the New Jersey Department of Education as attached. Item number three, that the board grants approval of a settlement in Juul litigation and authorizing the superintendent of schools and/or the board president to execute all documents necessary to complete the settlement process. Item number four, that the board approves the annual comprehensive financial report and auditor's manager report on administrative findings for the fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two as attached. Recommendations, finding number twenty-two dash zero-zero-one, that the food service net cash resources exceed three months' average expenditures, the school district will implement a corrective action plan to continue to monitor the finances of its food service fund and create a plan to reduce the net cash resources below its three-month average expenditures. And there were no recommendations in the prior year's audit. Item number five, to approve the tentative fiscal year twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four school district budget for submission to the executive county superintendent for approval as stated below. Item number six, that the board authorize the withdrawal of capital reserve in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the long-range facility plan. Item number seven, that the board authorize the withdrawal of maintenance reserve in the amount of five-hundred-thousand dollars for required maintenance projects in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Item number eight, that the board approves the resolution establishing the maximum amount of travel and related expenses for the twenty-three, twenty-four school years attached. And item number nine, that the board approves the travel and related expense reimbursement of school staff and board of education members for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as attached. Item number C, operations number one, that the board accepts with appreciation the following donations, new children's toys donated to the New Albany School from Mr. Jacob Hawes, five acoustic guitars donated to the high school from the Burlington County Sheriff's Department, and four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars for the New Albany kindergarten field trip to Johnson's Farm from Sehassa. Item number two, that the board authorizes garrison architects to amend the long-range facilities plan for other capital projects for the construction of a pulveron located at the memorial school. And item number three, that the board approves the revised school bus emergency evacuation drills as attached. Item number D, contracts, I'm sorry, letter D, contracts. Item number one, that the board approves the memorandum of understanding between in-site health and Cinnamonson Township Public Schools as attached. Item number two, that the board approves a sending tuition contract agreement between Cinnamonson Board of Ed and Oakland Board of Ed as attached. That the board approves the receiving tuition contract agreement between Cinnamonson Board of Ed and Cherry Hill Board of Ed as attached. And item number three, that the board approves the receiving tuition contract agreement between Cinnamonson Board of Ed and Cherry Hill Board of Ed as attached. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Livinggood. Mr. Bramhall, may I have a motion to approve number sixteen, letters A through E, please?
So moved.
Thank you very much, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Ms. Byssie?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion approved. And on to number seventeen, other business, Mr. Capello, please.
Thank you again, Mrs. Turner. There are two items this evening appearing under other business. Item A, the Board of Education and Cinnamonson Education Memorandum of Agreement for the years two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-eight, and also seeking the board's approval for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school calendar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Capello. Mr. Gaffney, may I have a motion to approve number seventeen, items A and B?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. All in favor, Mr. Evans?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion approved. Now, we will move on to number eighteen, public comments of other matters. Please let me remind you that during the public comment section of the meeting, the board will see public comment on any items. Members of the public are reminded that if they wish to speak when called upon, participants should state their first and last name and address clearly for the record. In accordance with the Cinnamonson Board of Education bylaw oh-one-six-four-point-six, comments will be limited to a maximum of four minutes per person. The comment period will not exceed thirty minutes. If you are wishing to speak, please raise your hand and you will be called upon.
Because I'll have firsthand in the blackface theater. If you don't speak in the microphone, then the TV won't pick it up. And there are currently six people streaming the meeting. And if anybody else just wanted, you could either line up or just, in order, we'll take you.
Hi, my name is Callista Klein, and I'm at twenty-six nineteen Riverton Road. I just wanted to take a minute to thank whoever's responsible, especially now at New Albany School. They just started, I guess, a trial after-school program for the younger kids, and my daughter is now two weeks into dance club, and she absolutely loves it. That was one thing she's looking forward to so much at Rush School is to be able to do after-school activities like her brother's, and the fact that, as a second grader now, it's only five weeks, but she is on cloud nine. So, thank you, because I can only imagine the amount of hard work and logistics that goes into organizing such a short-term item, but it's really made a big impact on her. So, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. I can tell you a hundred percent I had nothing to do with it. Thank you to Mrs. Jones and the teachers at New Albany School, who are really passionate about it, so I appreciate your remarks. Ma'am?
My name is Ashley Neeld, and I live at ten-twelve Highland Avenue. Did you know that New Jersey was one of the first and few states to require that school districts provide support to students with disabilities? However, the support was not inclusive. Students with disabilities were sent to special education institutions to support them, which resulted in a large amount of segregated educational settings across the state. Other states built supports within their schools. This method of support led schools in New Jersey to the idea that separate is better, and that my child would get more at a separate school. Additionally, resources and self-contained classrooms were designed to reduce the student-to-teacher ratio so more intensive instruction could occur. After passing IDEA in nineteen-seventy-five, these segregated spaces were designed to help with the integration and initial schooling of students that had been prior placed in institutions. Resource rooms and self-contained classrooms were developed around the idea that student-to-teacher ratios were of paramount importance. The concept proposes that smaller class sizes in standardized environments will allow the teacher to provide more individualized and intensive support. However, this concept has no actual support in research. The least restrictive environment law passed LAWSU in two thousand and seven shined a spotlight on the need for change to bring students with disabilities into their neighborhood schools. Today, New Jersey currently has forty-five-point-one percent inclusion rate, according to the annual report to Congress, in the implementation of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act of two thousand twenty. We define inclusion rate as the percentage of students aged six through twenty-one served under IDEA Part B and educated in general education classrooms eighty percent more of their school day. Some of this information I already knew, and more of it I learned last week at a presentation on inclusive education by the New Jersey Coalition for Inclusive Education. My own child is a student in Cinnamonson Public Schools in second grade. I also have been a therapist for children for over thirteen years. I've been traveling to schools up and down Pennsylvania, and most recently also in New Jersey, exposing myself to every single type of classroom that there is, and I, my own child is currently receiving less than seventy percent of her education in the least restrictive environment, which is the regular education classroom. Not only that, but I've been a therapist for thirteen years, and I've recently transitioned from being a school-based therapist to private practice. Over the course of thirteen years, I've traveled to all of these different schools, and I now hold a private practice license to provide mental health services to children in Pennsylvania and New Jersey. I also hold a behavior specialist license in Pennsylvania, which is required to work with children with autism spectrum disorder. When I started my own practice, I knew my focus had to be on providing supports to children of all abilities, and that that is exactly what I intend to do. I provide counseling services that is inclusive to all children, children who are pre-verbal, children who are verbal, and children with many types of neurodiversity and neurotypical children as well. I have skin in this game, both personally and professionally. I believe that my daughter's regular education teacher is amazing, and I want you to know that. I don't, she doesn't know this, but I have nicknamed her the Miss Honey of second grade. If you've ever seen the movie Matilda, you know that Miss Honey is really special. My daughter's teacher is kind, warm, loving, and she is my child's biggest cheerleader. And how do I know that? Because my child, who is working so hard to learn to read and write, sat down on her own over Christmas right, Christmas break, to write her very own Miss Honey a song and a card to tell her that she missed her. Currently, my daughter is being excluded from her neurotypical peers for more than thirty percent of her school day. That is not only a disservice to her, but to her peers as well. She has so much to learn from them, and I firmly believe they have so much to learn from her as well. I want not only my own child, but all children, to receive a quality education here in Cinnamonsen, and I know that we are working really hard to do that. But I see firsthand that we still have a lot of work to do, both personally and professionally. I really would like to thank you, Dr. Capello, for coming to the meeting last Tuesday. I really thought it was great that you were there at the inclusion meeting, and I was happy to see your support of that program. I think that all Cinnamonson students have the right not to just survive their education, but to thrive and to be the best version of themselves they can be with our support. And so I'm encouraging you to be thoughtful in deciding professional development opportunities for all teachers in this district, and to give them the gift of learning more about how to implement more inclusion into their general education classrooms. And the rest of this, oh, no, it did print. I'm really nervous, I'm very sorry. Our teachers are some of the best, and I followed my husband here because the education in Cinnamonsen is among the best, but it should be the best it can be for all students of all abilities in our community. New Jersey Coalition for Inclusive Education would be happy to provide staff trainings to all teachers in Cinnamonsen, and I have no doubt that they are the right people for this job. So I urge you to strongly consider partnering with NJCIE to give the gift of inclusion for all students of all abilities through the support of staff development. Our children all deserve not just to survive, but to thrive.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Tamar Beatty, two thousand and ninety-one, Arbor Way, Martinsville, New Jersey. Good morning. My name is Tamar Beatty, as I told you, and I am a very proud special education teacher at the high school. In fact, you heard, I live in Martinsville, which is really far away, but I continue to come here every day because I love what I do, and I love this community, and I love my students. Also, the president of the Cinnamonson Education Association, representing three hundred and fifty members, including our amazing, certificated staff and our very valuable educational support professionals. And I am here tonight because, like you, I and all the CA members share a deep commitment to the success of all of our students, regardless of their means, natural abilities, or identity. And I want to thank the administration and Board of Education for sharing that vision. This contract, a great five-year deal, reflects and recognizes that you understand that our working conditions are our students' learning conditions. We appreciate the manner in which the process was carried out and completed prior to the expiration of our current contract, which doesn't always happen. We look forward to our continued collaborative work together toward the benefit of our educators, students, and community, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your remarks. Any other members of the public who'd like to address the board at this time?
Okay, hearing no further remarks. Wait, sorry.
Brittany Relvis, you guys know this mic's not even on, right? Hello? Whatever, you can hear me. So anyway, Brittany Relvis, Cinnamonsen, New Jersey. I definitely want to piggyback off the mom in the back. She was very put together and had her notes, and one thing I have to disagree on, because my second grader is here, she might disagree and say her second-grade teacher is the best, and that just goes to show you what's going on over at New Albany. I've talked about this last month, about the meeting, this coalition that was brought to Cinnamonsen was brought by a parent, not by our, you know, people in charge of our district. Those were at the meeting that last week or two. Instead of, I guess, addressing or, you know, just taking feedback, I was called a liar by the district social whatever, special education person, when I said that the kids talk about the slow hall in the high school. We had a kid that sat here after, excuse me, it's my five minutes, thank you.
Four minutes.
Four minutes, four minutes now. We had an individual who was going to college, who sat here with us after, who went through the Cinnamonsen district, who agreed and thanked us for having a voice. I don't have a child, that's classified, but like I said, I'm here because we're, they're all our children. So whatever we can do to assist our children, we should be doing. Again, shout out to New Albany, who included the parent meeting that's held every month. Definitely will be talking to the middle school about including that as well. These are important things that should be talked about and included. I questioned the inclusion. I was told that we have inclusion classes. I've gone back and forth in email, I guess I'll stay after today to see what they have to say. But from what I see, I came from a district where my kids were in inclusion class, we were well aware that our kids were in inclusion class, and I don't think that's happening here. So, I hear a lot of things about the high school, can't speak on the high school, I have kids here, but I'll speak on the middle school, and what I see what's going on there, and it's disgusting. They're being shoved into a classroom, and I will say it again and again, and I'm entitled to my opinion, because I pay taxes here and my kids are here. So, appreciate your time, take care.
I did that popovski, we live on Wynwood in Cinnamonsen, we moved here two years ago. Probably the biggest mistake of our lives right now, where we stand. My heart goes out to the mom that spoke about her daughter, because we're in the same boat. Ms. Lowallum, if you can get us an IEP, that would be great, because I've asked for it in writing, in an email, probably five times now, haven't gotten one. Dr. Capello, I CC'd you on the email, haven't gotten a reply either. We don't have inclusion in these schools. These kids are segregated, separated, and pointed out. The kids know who they are, what classrooms they're in, what hallways they're housed. And before you tell me there isn't a slow hall in the high school, I know there is, I've seen it, I've toured it. It took us six months to get a tour, to see it, and it's beyond disappointing. We moved from out of state, we moved from North Carolina, yes, the boonies, like the middle of nowhere, a state that has no funding and practices full inclusion of every child. Our daughter was never placed anywhere but a general education classroom, never. It wasn't even an option. And they could have shipped her out to another school, like this district loves to do, they could have put her in another classroom, but they didn't. They included her in Jan Ed. From the beginning, she's always been included in Jan Ed, until she came here. And before somebody tells me it's not a fight, in this district, it is absolutely a fight, because the social workers, the learning consultants, I'm sorry to tell you, you don't know better, you don't know our kid, you don't know her full capabilities, and you're not giving her a chance. That's it. If you can get me an IEP, that would be great, because I'm entitled to an revised one, and I can't get one.
I have a kid in the high school, and I have a kid in the middle school, and I've lived here for about 17 years. And I would never presume to speak for a parent of a special ed kid about what their experiences are in the district, but I was at that meeting last week, and I came last week because at the last school board meeting, one parent came and stood up and said, hey, there's this meeting coming up. And I have heard through the great mind that we might have some problems in Cinnamonsen, and I wanted to learn. So I came, and I sat down, and I heard the presentation, and it was very educational. I wish very much that I had just heard the speaker and maybe instead of focusing on people who aren't attached to the issue. But I learned a lot, and then afterwards posted some notes about what I had learned and heard from some, from other parents who are struggling. But I want to make sure that those issues are really heard. The last parent who stood here and the first parent who stood here to talk about these issues have really specific things that they need to accomplish for their children. I don't think that saying things that aren't true, levitating, it's not constructive. When we say Cinnamonsen has no inclusion, we have some versions of inclusion, and we can clearly do better, right? So, that's one thing. I was at that meeting, nobody called anybody a liar. It's just not a thing that happened in real life. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, as people listen in this room, as they listen to recordings, that they don't, that they take in the parts that are realistic, and maybe talk to parents that they know. Talk to your teachers. Call their, I'm sorry, I remember earlier saying it was your five minutes, so now it's mine. We don't need to. So you can call, I mean, I've had questions. I called the administration and I got answers that, again, compared with parents that I know and I talk to, when you form your own opinions. So I just strongly encourage that anybody who's listening who wants to know how our programs are, talk to your kids. If they're in the high school, you know, they'll know what those things are. Listen to the earlier parts of the presentation, there is some level, Play Unified wouldn't be a thing, and that presentation was powerful if there was no inclusion. But then listen to those parents too, that are having a hard time and that are having struggles, and make sure that, you know, you're elevating those voices over people who are just talking to talk. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Any other members of the public who would like to address the Board at this time? Any other members of the public seeing none, Mrs. Turner?
Don't see any, let's move on. We will have no executive session. Mr. Gaffney, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We do board comments since I designed the board comment.
You can do that.
See, I didn't miss one till then, I was a little pushy, but.
I gave you my job.
I'm sorry.
Forgot to let you do it, sorry.
It's my big night, right? Congratulations to the high school drama club. Your presentation in Chicago was fantastic. Congratulations to Mr. Brett Jenkins on being named South Jersey Girls Basketball Coach of the Year. Make sure you head over to the middle school this weekend or next for their show, Crazy for You. Break a leg to the cast and crew. Congratulations to all of our Creative Invention Convention participants. Congratulations to the Eleanor Rush students as participants in the future chef. All chefs were awesome, and the food they prepared was delicious. And congratulations to the winner, Nora Sorino. Congratulations to George Liriano Martinez and Luz Liriano on your retirement. You will both be truly missed from the high school. Thank you to the CEA and the Board for working together to reach an agreement. Thank you to the Play Unified coaches for keeping us informed about the wonderful accomplishments within the program. Thank you for the generous donations to our children in the school district. Best wishes to the athletes and all sports for the spring. And if you enjoyed tonight, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for April the 18th, 7 o'clock somewhere here in the middle school. And additional information can be found on our district website. And that's the report, Mrs. Turner.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Turner, I have a comment.
Yes.
So I want to speak as a parent who was on the Board of Education. The 12th graders, and I apologize that I missed the very beginning, but the 12th graders are in Disney World right now, and it is the highest percentage of any grade I believe that has ever gone to Disney World together. They're really close, and, you know, a lot of them have been together really since kindergarten. But I just wanted to point out that my son was part of Play Unified for a couple of years. He did the basketball, and he was encouraged by Mr. Digney, who was his soccer coach. He's a four-year varsity athlete, all-state, all, you know, a whole bunch of different things. One of the best things he's ever done was Play Unified in this district. And not only that, but his friendships with the students that are actually part of Play Unified, and I mean the students and the athletes both, it's one of the best things that has ever happened to him as a student here. And he is not aware of a slow hallway. Is it possible that it's because they're his friends and he's in there with them sometimes? I'm not sure. But I did ask him, because I was really concerned, and they, you know, and he's a, I would say, a very well-adjusted 12th grader, and he's never heard of that. I am so proud of the things that this district has done, and it doesn't mean that, of course, we can improve. I taught inclusion for 22 years. I know very well how great it can be. But that, you know, but we do have inclusion. He has been in the classrooms with these kids for many years in many different electives and, you know, all different, in phys ed since he was in kindergarten, for sure. So anyway, I just wanted to put that out there, that our special ed teachers do a great job of taking care of our students too, and our regular education teachers, and the love that these kids have for each other. My son and another student are literally fighting over who got to give somebody a ride to school because their parent couldn't. Like, I'm telling you, these kids really have learned so much here, and it's because of the staff and the administration and the parents and the entire community. So I just wanted to say thank you, and that we need, oh, yes, and the Board sometimes. No, I'm just kidding. So that's all. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Katie. And I will piggyback on just a quick minute of what she said. I also spoke to all three of my children, who are all graduates of Cinnamonsen, and asked that same question. Are you aware of a slow hall at the high school? And they all told me, had no idea what I was talking about. That's my input. Thank you everyone for coming. Mr. Gaffney, may I have a motion to convene the, to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion for.